No, none. There's nobody here. Okay, we're going to start the Franklin Regional School Directors Committee, the whole meeting for April 3, 2023. We're in executive session from 6:45 to 7:15 for contractual personnel and legal issues. Dr. Prano, superintendent's report.
I'm going to quickly turn this over to Mr. Stanzak.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for having us. I always enjoy coming here in the spring to kind of show off a little bit by bringing our students in after they've had some professional experience and whatnot, and talking to you about our senior internship program. So I have a couple of quick things to say, and then I'll quickly turn it over to our students. First of all, a few updates. The last couple of years I've stood in front of you, I've been giving updates about how the program has been growing back since the pandemic. We had some difficulties there, obviously, getting students out into the community. But last year, we were back up to about 30, 35 students participating in the program. This year, we have about 50 students out in the internship program. And next year, we have 60 students enrolled, and I've already started meeting with, 40 of them have already submitted their application, and I've already started meeting with them to start making plans for next year. So it feels like the program is back in full swing, and actually as strong as it's ever been since I took it over. I anticipate next year being a busy year and having our students all across the area working with local professionals. I'm excited about it. A couple of quick thank yous. First of all, I'd like to thank all the companies and organizations and businesses out there who host our interns, whether they're businesses who host our students every year, or whether it was just a one-off this year. We have a lot of kids out in the professional setting, so I want to thank them all for welcoming our students. I also want to thank them for all the work that they're doing to, you know, really buy into this kind of a program, too. As a school, we're making some changes, and we're setting up more of a different kind of school day to allow our students to get out and have these kinds of experiences as part of their high school career. Similarly, a lot of the businesses in our area are making those kinds of changes, too, changing their policies, changing the way that they do business, and allow for untrained high school students to come in and work with them and be able to show them the kinds of opportunities that are here for them right in their own backyard. So I've noticed that. That's been a big change over the past couple of years, so I wanted to acknowledge and thank our local businesses for that. I'd also like to thank our leadership, of course. Thank you, our board, for your continued support. We're getting creative with how we're preparing our students and giving them what they need in order to be prepared for their futures, and we appreciate that creativity, that flexibility, that forward-thinking, and I continue, I thank you for your continued support. All right. Hopefully, that was short enough. I'm going to turn it over to our students now. Tonight, we have Sabrina Pushkar and Ty Thomason, if you guys want to come up here, please. They were interns. Actually, they're both kind of currently interning, so they started in the fall, and they're still doing a few things now. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to them, and I'm just going to ask them to quickly talk about, first of all, why they chose the internship program, what was attractive to them about that, what they got to do, what were their experiences, where did they work, and then finally, whether or not this experience has helped you with any of your future plans and your decision-making. All right? Whoever would like to go first?
Hi, everyone. So I'm Pierce Ty Thomason. I'm a senior, obviously, as I've been introduced. Well, current, in this fall, I started the internship program, working at Forbes Regional Hospital in Roseville. So I started kind of off the year in, well, in the summer a little bit. I had a little bit of a realization that I wasn't really sure where I wanted to go. I knew I wanted to go in the field of medicine, pursuing either dental or maybe speech pathology, and I wasn't really sure about exactly how to go about that because internships, obviously, during and a little bit post-COVID, were not like super open to having summer interns. So I really didn't know where I wanted to go in the field of medicine post-COVID, just because I haven't really had that much experience with it. So the internship program kind of gave me the opportunity to kind of explore that realm and kind of see what that working experience and what the work life really was post-COVID in a hospital, and I was actually able to go into two different departments, speech pathology and the emergency department, kind of going, bouncing back between the two for the entire nine weeks of the fall quarter. And I really had a lot of fun. I explored quite a bit in terms of medicine and kind of seeing where I wanted to go and seeing kind of how a hospital can kind of work together. And I was able to really see where I wanted to go, and now I'm kind of being able to reap the benefits of that when I'm now, obviously, in the college application and decision phase of my high school career. And I was able to finally make a decision on my major, which took me quite a long time, and I've decided to major in global health at the University of McGill in Quebec, Canada, in their accelerated pre-dental program. So really, I don't think I would have been able to make that decision and really make my applications as strong as they could have been with the perspectives I had gained without the internship program, just because I was able to really talk with a lot of professionals and see their insights about how they would have done it if they could do it again, and kind of how their undergrad and then post-grad experience really shaped them and kind of see what they would have done differently. And I was able to shape my experiences, hopefully my future experiences off my decisions off of that. And then, so right now, I'm actually currently in a different internship, because I really realized that pediatric dentistry and dentistry in general was where I really wanted to go. So I was able to get my new internship with the pediatric dentistry of Pittsburgh, out of Fox Chapel and Toronto Heights and R I D C Park. Going through their three offices, it's a private practice with two pediatric dentists, Dr. Ryan Shaw, who actually services a lot of, more than I would have thought, a lot of kids in our community. And that's been a really, really awesome experience, because it's really been able to give me the opportunity to really hone in on what exactly I want to do post-grad. Now, obviously, I'm planning a little bit ahead, but I feel like in the new education, that perspective and being able to like know exactly what I would want to do and what other people would want to do is very important, and it can really help us shape very important financial decisions, obviously, with college in 2023, which is getting much more competitive. And also, these programs, you basically have to know exactly what you want to do, not necessarily from my age, but pretty early in your undergrad, exactly what you want to do. So I feel like really internship program gave me the opportunity to explore all of the methods to do that and then see kind of my options, as well as where I really fit well as a student. So yeah, seeing that in my internship now has really given me some great, great opportunities to explore.
All right. I am Sabrina Pushkar. I went into the internship program already knowing that I wanted to major in entertainment management, but I decided to use the internship program as a resume builder, because I want to go to the Disney College program and then eventually be employed with Disney in their parks. So I decided I want to build my resume to kind of be more appealing in my resume and just my applications. So my first location was a small theater company named Westmoreland Performing Arts. I've been a student with them since I was 12 years old, so of course, they were happy to welcome me. And I was really excited to see what they do during the day when there's no students. So I got to help make advertisements, because they are a newer company. They opened up last January. So I got to make advertisements that got sent out to local schools in the district, and I got to help prepare for shows. I got to give more of a student insight into it, because they haven't had a student in there since, actually, my sister was in the program. So they like to use me as kind of a, how can we keep this more engaging for you guys? And then my second location was actually at our primary school, and that was a bit of a fluke, because I was supposed to be at the Westmoreland Cultural Trust, but that fell through. So I'm now in the creative arts class with Mrs. Smith at the primary school, and that has been one of the greatest experiences of my life. I get to work with kindergarten through second grade. And as someone who grew up in the arts program at Franklin, I loved getting to like teach them what I learned when I was in second grade and kindergarten, and get to share it with them, and seeing them grow, and seeing them excited to walk into the room every day. It's really something I love. And it kind of helps me prepare more for the future, because entertainment management is such a broad field. There are many different ways you can go. You can go towards theme parks. You can go towards events, or you can go anywhere in the arts. So it kind of helps me decide where I want to go, and that was definitely really helpful. And in the fall, I plan to attend Valencia College, where I can get my bachelor in arts or an associate's in arts, and then from there, you are guaranteed acceptance into any of the 12 Florida state schools.
Do we have any questions for our interns?
I don't have a question. So a lot of times up here, we're looking, I don't have a microphone.
It doesn't work.
The, we, we see a lot of times where, you know, we're looking to offer things for our students, internship program being one of that. We've, you know, obviously, you guys did a great job telling us what you learned from that, from that program. One of the things that concerns me a lot of times, though, that I'm interested in is there's only so much time for our high school students to take advantage of different things. So what did you sacrifice maybe in your personal time or your school time to prepare for, to do this internship, and why, you know, to think through ahead of time and plan ahead of time to take advantage of this particular program versus something else? And what may you, you know, just to help other kids plan out, you know, as they're coming up through, whether this is a useful tool for them, or if they're, to know kind of what their, what their time sacrifice may be giving up something else in their, in their high school lives?
Microphone.
Sorry. So from my personal perspective, I actually already had fulfilled almost all of my academic requirements for my senior year before starting. I only needed three classes. I actually ended up taking five. I'm taking two online classes on the side during my free periods. And so I haven't really seen necessarily like, I, there's no gap, really. I'm, I leave after four periods, so that leaves only three periods that I'm missing, and I'm actually taking those two classes, I guess. I'm technically only not having one period of my senior year. And most of the seniors in our class are missing two, at least one or two classes on average, and they're not doing anything. Now, some of them may have employment, but they're not really doing anything on a program basis or anything that's very like, I would say constructive, I guess. So, I mean, I didn't necessarily plan to do the internship like from my freshman year or anything, but I was able to kind of get advisement during my sophomore year bef, right at the end of COVID, obviously, about what I could do my junior year to make it possible. And I was able to fill my schedule up pretty well and make kind of those changes to really like double down on some things and fulfill those academic requirements. Now, I might have sacrificed one or two electives, but at the end of the day, I don't think I was going to need like cooking or an extra gym class, for example. Now, obviously, for some students, that maybe that's a requirement, but for, for me, I don't see like it was a, it was an issue or I missed out on anything by any means. And I was able, I was able to really work with Mr. Stanzak to really establish my schedule around it. Obviously, right now, I'm an athlete, so I'm in, every day, I have practice after school. But I'm able, I was able to schedule my internship around it, so I was able to do my internship during the winter and fall quarters of the year, which don't, I guess, mess with my sports practices or anything like that.
Much like Ty mentioned, I had already hit a lot of my requirements. I had an older sister who graduated the year before I was a freshman, so she really kind of helped me. She told me all about the internship program her senior year, and that was really appealing to me. So we talked every year at scheduled time, and it was, okay, what classes can I take? We both are very involved in the choir department, so we both discussed, we were like, okay, what classes can we take to fill my requirements, as well as keeping choir in my schedule every year, and also getting to make sure I can do the internship program. So I only have two academic classes this year, one of which is online. So I have two choir courses, and then my open period where I do my online, and then English, and then I leave for my internship. And lucky for me, I have, I had two really good advisors that were super flexible with my schedule, because I did musical. There would be after-school rehearsals. I take theater classes and teach them outside of school, and both of my places were super flexible with letting me leave, or adjusting my hours, or giving me work to do on the side that I could do on my own time if I had to leave and go to a rehearsal, or if I had a family emergency. So for me, that wasn't really a problem.
So kind of the overarching theme that I hear from both of you is a message for parents and students coming into the high school is make sure you get your requirements done early, and you will have the time to explore these options without it being a hardship in any way.
Like they both said, most of our students do have a lot of their requirements done by their senior year. Our counselors do a nice job of making sure that they're setting our seniors up to, you know, have a little bit more flexibility so they can take advantage of these sorts of things. We also have an application process for the, for the internship to make sure the students are on track and that this is the best option for them.
Thank you.
Yeah, two questions. One, Ty, talk to us a little bit about where you were last year, not directly related to this internship, but in terms of experiences for, for students.
So yeah, last year, I was able to take advantage of, well, after a long application process, I was able to take advantage of a program to do a foreign exchange in Brittany, France, in a city called Brest, for the entire year. So I was able to do a foreign exchange. Obviously, we have language classes. We have French classes at Franklin Regional, but I wanted to take it a little bit farther, and I was very interested in the cultural aspects of a foreign exchange, and also the independent living of, living with a host family in a whole other country. So I was able to take advantage of that and spend my entire year abroad, where all the credits, obviously, were utilized.
Absolutely. We're flexible. Our, our philosophy is to create one's dreams and aspirations and to make that possible. And Ty had big dreams and big hopes, and really proud of the experience that he brings back to us this year as a senior. It's not, it is pretty uncommon, and so I appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely uncommon, but I would say that there's definitely a lot of kids who are off of seeing other people do it. I mean, I was actually originally inspired by the exchange students that were coming to our high school. Obviously, we, with COVID, it gets a little messy, but even during our COVID year, we did have our one Selena exchange student from Spain. But every year, when I was a freshman, there was two, and I believe the year before that, there may have been, I think there was two as well. But that really inspired me to, obviously, even just know the fact that it was, that kind of program exists. So I obviously did it, and then now, I'm actually seeing a lot of people who are interested, because they're like, wow, that's possible. I didn't even know that was a thing or that, that existed post-COVID. So there's a lot of people, I actually know like at least three students who are like seriously pursuing it for their, their, their high school career, and they're all, I think, freshmen and sophomores. So yeah, I hope the exchange students come back to the Franklin Regional High School.
And Sabrina, this morning, were you involved, or today, were you involved with the K to two performances?
I was. I just left there, actually.
Tell us a little bit about what's happening there.
So the second graders would come in every morning at about 8:00 AM, and they would rehearse until 8:45, a show called Hats, which is about what's inside your heart that really matters, not what you look like on the outside or what you appear to be. So I would work with them, and I kind of gave them like points I learned from doing the high school musical and the fifth grade musical. And they often point out, they're like, you were in Greece. And I hear that maybe 10 times a day, and it's very funny, because they're like, you're the mean teacher. And I'm like, I'm not mean in real life. I promise. So I teach them that every day, and they also ask me, they're like, hey, what's this word? Or I'm having trouble getting this dance step down. Like, can you help me? And so from there, I like help them as they needed, or with Mrs. Smith, she would have me do sound sometimes, or earlier, I helped like get them ready for the show. I gave them a speech that whatever happens, happens, and they'll do great. They're cute. So that's all that really matters. At the end of the day, they can just smile, and everyone will love it. And I also helped them warm up and kind of helped them de-stress a little bit. There was a lot of tension in that room, as you can imagine.
So now that you are a high school student, ready to go on, what are your thoughts on the K to two performing, creative and performing arts?
I love it. We didn't have creative arts at Heritage while I was there, and I wish I had that class, because I wasn't a big like gym class person, wasn't a big computer class. I wish we had creative arts, because Mrs. Smith is wonderful. She does dancing every day. They learn like aspects of music. We get to use their imaginations. Like right now, we have little flowers outside the classroom that have like a dance step, the one that's hop like a bunny. And so in small groups, they create little dances together, and they perform it for the class. And then we also gave them a project of personality flowers. So we gave them a piece of paper and markers in 10 minutes, and they had to draw a flower of something they liked. So we had someone, all the petals were dog ears, or we had someone, they made a Lego flower. So for me, that's so much fun to see, because that's what I grew up loving, and I didn't have that opportunity.
That concludes any questions I have. How about the?
No, I just want to say how valuable this program is, because, you know, for somebody like yourself that knew what you wanted to go into, it provides an opportunity to explore that and, and capitalize on that, as well as something else to go into and see what options are there, and whether you want to go down a different pathway or not. It provides those opportunities and flexibility within your scheduling to be able to do that. And I think that it's, kudos to both of you for doing that and taking advantage of that, but also, you know, we see how valuable this program is.
Mr. Stanzak, thanks for all the work you put into this program.
It's my pleasure. This is a.
I know you put a lot of effort into it.
Doing it, and I love seeing the students respond to it so well. It's great.
I know you do. Thank you very much. Thank you, kids. Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay, we have no public comments tonight. Listeners' comments.
None for public sessions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, agenda items. First up, Dr. Rogowski, P A E S lab.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am bringing forward the P A S lab for your consideration. This is the first of many curricular items that will be on this evening's agenda that was presented to the curriculum council in March. The P A S lab stands for Practical Assessment Exploration System. What it is, it's really designed for students in our life skills, artistic support or learning support classrooms, to help them with post-secondary education and training. Within this program, students are exposed to 264 different jobs, as well as provide insight to independent living skills and needs. The assessments are data-driven, and the assessment employment potential reports will provide us the workplace skills that will generate into real-world employment opportunities. This is one piece that has been missing from our very successful transition program, and we can tie the cost into the ESFRE funds, because as Mr. Stanzak said, it's been very difficult to place students, specifically students in special education, in our work exploration program due to COVID, whether it's the restrictions that the employers have, or the restrictions that maybe some of our students have. We don't have the right data that's necessary to really support them for that next step. And so this would be an awesome opportunity for us in tying those funds in, to be able to purchase this program.
Any questions for Mr. Dr. Rogowski? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You got it.
The second agenda item is the Future Ready Comprehensive Plan. This is the K to 12 Guidance Plan that has previously been submitted and approved, and this is a revised version completed by our K to 12 school counselor team, and it includes updated program goals, and it is printed out for you in your packets. This is to be submitted to the state every three years, so you'll see it again in three years from now.
Any questions for Mr. Folvio? K-12 Counseling Curriculum Resources.
There are two counseling resources listed under this agenda item. The first is the K to five curriculum resource called Quaver Ready, and the second is the six to 12 counseling resource called The Core Project. You have in your, or docs, you have access to that, those logins, and that this is actually a, an agenda item for putting these two resources out for 30-day review.
Questions on K-12 Counseling Curriculum Resources?
People want to come and, they can come and try this out?
We will have access for them to log in, so they can review the, both of those resources.
So they should just come.
Your own display.
You can come to the Newhansburg admin offices for that.
Thank you. And there's a number of items that.
There are.
That'll apply to.
Yes.
And ESL Geographic.
So similarly, this is an ESL, English as a Second Language, K to 12, learning resource from National Geographic and Sun Gage Learning, and this is also up for 30-day review. There are multiple pieces to this that include Reach for the Stars, Reach Higher, Impact, and Lift, and those are just names for each of the categories, for each of the grade levels, the grade level spans. So we will also have access up for those 30 days if anyone needs to review those.
Any questions? Okay, Power Science.
Power Science is a database that will be used at the intermediate school library. It includes a focus on earth and space, life science and physical science, and it is in addition to those resources that might be found in a textbook. These, this will also be up for 30-day review and available at the administrative offices.
Questions on Power Science?
Is this used with, in a class, or just something that the students can access on their own?
So, right, so students, what, teachers would use this as a research opportunity for students, so they may bring them into the library or use it in their classrooms through guided research around a topic.
Thank you.
And we do use the power, power knowledge, other areas of that, so that's why the science suite would be in addition to some of the other pieces that are just library-based. This is a science-specific.
Health and Phys ed curriculum.
This is also an agenda item up for 30-day display at the administrative offices. We have three areas. Glenn Co. Health is the curricular resource for sixth through 12th grades. Catch is for grades four and five, and you'll perhaps remember that we approved, you approved, the Catch vaping curriculum to be used at the sixth to 12 level by Cara Kelly, our PIT MAPS person. This Catch curriculum is comprehensive health education resources for grades four and five. And then Scholastic Choices are, we use Scholastic Magazine in other grade levels as well. This is specific to sixth through eighth grade health topics.
Any questions on Health and Phys ed? Thanks, Mr.
As far as the health curriculum, parents are notified whenever their students are going through this curriculum and what the subject matter is.
That's correct.
And they're given a choice whether they want their child to participate in certain topics or not.
That's correct. And if we adopt these new curricular resources, we will kind of adjust those notifications to match the timing and the scope and sequence of our new resources as well.
And I would just say, for parents, the, these are all curriculum, they're going to be a little bit different than if we've looked at books before. Most of these are online resources now, but I would highly encourage. There are some sections we may use, may not use, but you'll have that communicated for people to come in for review, what, what we may or may not be using in the, each curriculum.
Yes, specifically to this, the Glenn Co. Health, grade six through 12, there are sections of one of the supplemental textbooks that we will not use, and that will be listed if someone comes to view that display.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Folvio. Dr. Del.
Good evening, everyone. The first item that I bring to you is a year-two contract proposal to once again solicit the services of Liz Mira, and she's been working with our science staff regarding the implementation and infusion of the next-generation science standards. She has been very warmly received throughout this year and highly demanded for a year-two with what is a very deep dive into looking at the curriculum and reimagining the way that we go about teaching students based upon a phenomenon-based education. And Liz has been phenomenal with her work. She'll be here tomorrow, in fact.
Questions for Dr. Del? Visible Body.
The second item is the Visible Body subscription. Our current human anatomy course does not have a textbook, so they're looking to use this resource, which is a three-dimensional opportunity to be able to look at all of the aspects of the human anatomy. the aspects of the human anatomy and physiology and be able to rotate it and be able to find different avenues of perspective, use it as a study tool, use it as a lab practicum device. So this tool, what we're looking here is, we've shared with you a one, three, and five-year price breakdown. What we would recommend is a one-year investigation right now to see if this is a proper tool to use with our students going into next year, and then look to make a long-term commitment at another time.
Questions for Dr. Delp?
I just wanted to make sure, I'm sorry, Scott.
Go ahead.
Probably the same question, but for this material, we were double-checking because we're kind of in a new frontier of a lot of online materials. All the other ones are up for 30-day review. This one does not say anything about that in this, but I can't remember if our discussion, I thought at the committee meeting that we were talking about anything that goes through board approval, we kind of thought that was the appropriate place for a 30-day review, and it's not mentioned here, so I wanted to bring it up now at the committee meeting to make sure that that.
Absolutely. Current policy does not require this as a digital resource to go through that same review process, but we certainly could put that out with these other items and be able to have access to the material so that folks could come in and take a look at what the digital platform looks like. It's really quite amazing.
I think that that's a follow-standardized process for all these, just, I think the public deserves a chance to take a look at what we're going to purchase with their tax dollars.
Excellent. The next item is the Biotechnology Course. This is looking at surveying our students' interest in taking part in a piloted version of the course, so the intent would be to implement this for next year. The curriculum for this course is provided by the company BioRad, which would allow students to be able to get a biotechnician assistant credentialing certificate, to be able to be a certified biotechnician at the end of this experience. Very interesting, very cutting-edge type of curricular experience for our students. And so we would be looking to do a one, a one-question survey, just seeing if students have room in their schedule to be able to do it, interest in their schedule to be able to do it, and borrowing that data, moving more aggressively with, going forward with a piloting of that course going into the next school year.
Questions?
I thought the conversation we had, yeah.
I, I mean, this is exactly the direction I would love to see us go, is empowering our students with these types of certifications that give them specific skills going into the workforce. Bravo. I love this.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Delp. Okay, summer sports camps. The athletic department is seeking board approval for the proposed boys' basketball, girls' basketball, football, tennis, volleyball, and wrestling camps, and the details and the events are explained in the attached sheets. Everything's the same, and it has been in the past. We've done these for years, and if anybody has any questions for, of it? Anybody have any questions? And these are run by the boosters, not by the school, so. Okay? All right, Mr. Perry.
Good evening. The first item on the agenda tonight is actually the presentation of our local audit report, and with us tonight is Mark Turnley. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Board members, thank you for having me here this evening. I put a couple pieces of correspondence in front of the board this evening. There's a copy, a thick copy of the audit report for the 21-22 fiscal year, but more importantly, in, inside cover that are a couple pieces of correspondence, both dated for this evening, and the one I'll be focusing on for the sake of this evening's presentation is the one that, about halfway down, it talks about general fund balance analysis. Just before I get into the, this synopsis, just a couple points about that thick audit report. That audit report is comprised of two major sections. One is the financial audit, where we're taking a look at the numbers and how you did for the year, and then there's another half that has to deal with our compliance audit of the district for certain federal programs that we pick and choose on an annual basis. So a couple quick comments about that thick report is, one, the type of opinion that we issued on the financial statements. As we have in the past, as we did for the 21-22 fiscal year, we issued what's known as an unmodified opinion, which basically means that the information contained in the body of that thick audit report is presented in conformity with the rules and regulations of our profession, and there are no departures from that. So that's a, it used to be called a clean opinion, and so that's the type of opinion you want, that's the type of opinion when you send your report out to third parties, you want them to see. Also, as I mentioned, in addition to that financial opinion, we also issue an opinion in, toward the back of that thick audit report on our compliance of our testing of federal programs. And when PDE gets a copy of this report, they will see that we tested in this particular year the National School Lunch Program, and they will see that, in our opinion, there were no findings of material non-compliance related to our audit of that program, so there was no necessity to include a corrective action plan for any findings. And once again, that's a good thing. That's the type of report you want PDE to have on an annual basis. So jumping back, if I may, to this synopsis, again, data for this evening, I'm just going to go over the numbers, and I'm sure Mr. Perry, over the course of the year, especially through the 21-22 fiscal year, has presented these numbers to you, but I just want to confirm how you did for the year, confirm those numbers. When you look at the first page of this synopsis, you'll see a five-year history of the overall general fund balance. Now, you have a number of different funds, a technology fund, a capital reserve fund, a capital improvement fund. What we'll be talking about initially here is your main operating fund, the general fund. So you can see a five-year history of how you did. Most recently, the bottom level shows for the 21-22 year, the fund balance decreased about $2.7 million, almost 21% from the previous fiscal year. When you turn to the top of page two, I start to break down your fund balance into their component parts. On page one, we talked about the overall general fund balance, but you, that fund balance is comprised of different sections. You have a restricted section, you have a committed section, and you have an unassigned. Those are the three major components of that fund balance. So on the top of page two, I give you a five-year history of the unassigned portion of that fund balance. And the reason I bring this to your attention, and unassigned, just by its very, by the wording, means that it's not restricted or earmarked for any particular purposes, can be used for general operations moving forward. The reason this number is important is because it's important to the state that your unassigned fund balance be at a certain percentage, at or below a certain percentage of your budget. So for the sake of the board, I do that calculation each year, and for the year ended June 30th, 2022, that calculation was 7.2%, and your requirement for the size of your budget is to be at or below 8%. So you can see that you're in compliance with the state's regulations with regard to that unassigned fund balance. On the top of page three, I give you another component of your fund balance, and I haven't done this in the past, but I do it this year for a particular reason, your committed portion. This is where the board has taken action to commit funds for a specific purpose. So you see a five-year history of that. And when you look below, I have a small note that over the five-year period, this committed portion of fund balance has been specifically for Peasars Rate stabilization, because as you know, if you've been on the board for a while, that that rate has, has gone up significantly over the past so many years, and for debt service. The reason I took time to show this to the board this year, and I think it's, it's meaningful for Franklin Regional School District because you've been proactive in utilizing your committed fund balance, is, as you may know, the state has recently done, did a performance audit, and they sample-tested 12 school districts. And one of the main reasons for this performance audit, and it ran through the year ended June 30, 21, but the main reason they did this is, what these 12 school districts had in common is that each of them went through the referendum exemption process, where they increased their millage above and beyond what the annual index allows all schools to raise their taxes. They went to a higher level without having to go to public referendum. They went through the exception process. So one of the things the state was looking at is, among other things, is, was it necessary for these schools to go through this exception process based on their overall total fund balance? We talked about the unassigned portion, and we talked about committed. And a number of these schools had a significant amount of money in categories such as assigned and committed, much like Franklin Regional. So the question was, did they really have to go to this referendum exception when they had these monies that quote-unquote were restricted or earmarked for particular purposes? And if they were, were they really using those monies for the intended purpose? And what they had saw was that in some of the cases, the school district had the same committed or assigned fund balance for that five-year period, even growing higher. So the question was, did you have that money committed simply because you had to meet the 8% threshold that I told you that you met? That they just lower that unassigned fund balance so that they could meet that threshold and were including additional monies, calling them reserved, in this committed money, and could have used those monies instead of going through the referendum process? So there was a lot of details in this performance audit, but the point I wanted to make to, to the board members here is, I, you know, I look back at your committed fund balance, and although it's been for the same purpose over the five-year period, same general purpose, you can see there has been active movement in this table over a five-year period. So if, if Franklin Regional were to be sample-tested in the future, depending on where the state is going with this, you know, I think this is just the first attempt to delve into a school district's fund balance and monies that they have set aside for particular purposes. Who knows where this is going to go in the future? But when I look at your committed fund balance, you could see that there's active management, even though it was dedicated for the same purposes, there's active management, not necessarily growing, but being used on an annual basis. So I guess on a short-term basis, and for now, that's a good thing, but it's kind of a cautionary point to the board that, keep that in mind as the years go on in terms of assigning or committing money. I think the state's really going to be actively looking at this to see if you really needed to do that, depending on if you're ever going to go to referendum exceptions. Not that Franklin Regional would have to, but in case you ever did, there, these are the sort of things that they're starting to look at.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
But in committing fund balance for specific purposes, isn't that prudent planning?
It absolutely is, and, and I would argue that, I would argue that point if ever asked, and not that they would ever ask the, the local independent auditor that question, but it almost seems to me that some of the schools are penalized for being prudent, because I have a number of schools who have had an increase in committed or assigned portion of their fund balance, and they've changed up its uses over the years. It can be used for capital facilities, it could be used for a number of purposes. Peasars Rate stabilization and debt service are common commitments of general fund balances. But it just seems that being prudent may, may not always be the best course in the eyes of the state. But, but again, keep in mind, looking this in the, in the perspective that these folks were raising their taxes and using that referendum exemption, I don't think, as long as you don't go down that road, you know, road, that that would ever be an issue for Franklin Regional. I think the commitment of funds and the assignment, if you can do it, I think it's a prudent use of the district's funds, so.
Thank you.
Just continuing on with the general fund at the bottom of page three, just a five-year history of your general fund revenues. Once again, just for information for the board, you can see the increase from the last fiscal year, about 1.7 million. When you turn to the top of page four, five-year history of general fund expenditures, again, just information for the board, you can see almost a 6% increase in this current fiscal year, a little over $3.5 million increase. Now, over the last five years and previous to that, each year you send money, you transfer money into other funds. These aren't expenditures going out to third parties, they're actually monies that are being transferred in-house for future use, monies that you send to your capital reserve fund and to your technology fund. Again, just a five-year history on that. This year, you sent $2.7 million to the capital reserve and technology fund combined. Again, in my opinion, another prudent use of your monies, setting earmarking those monies for much-needed purposes in other funds to, to basically restrict those funds for those particular purposes out of your general fund. Turning on to the top of page five, as I do, just how did we do budget versus actual for the 21-22 year? The final results in the first bullet point show that actual revenues exceeded budgeted revenues by about $881,000. That was mainly, the, the main over-budget was in local source revenues, which are your taxes, all your various taxes, real estate, deed transfer, wage taxes, things of that nature. That's where the largest excess was. Federal source revenues were under-budget, and it's been tough over the last couple of years for school districts to budget those monies because you got the ESRS money, you got the ARPESRS money, and, and the flow and spending of that has been very volatile over the two years, so you were under-budget in that particular area. The general fund, the second bullet point, expenditures, actual expenditures exceeded budgeted expenditures by $2 million, and you can see below that, the two main areas that were over-budget in expenditures were special programs category, about $445,000, and then operating transfers that we just talked about, which are very important. The district budgeted about $925,000, but ended up sending over $2.7 million. So those weren't necessarily operating cost-type expenditures, those were transfers to in-house funds, obviously, to better the district. So if you're going to be over in expenditures, doing those transfers was, was the, was a prudent way to, to do that. And then the last bullet point simply says, when you did your initial budget, you budgeted to have to use about $1.6 million of your 21-22 budget to balance. In actuality, you ended up using 2.7, because that was the excess of expenditures over revenues for the 21-22 year. So you're, you actually, from a negative perspective, you were only going to use 1.6, but you ended up using 2.7 of your previous year fund balance to operate during the 21-22 fiscal year. At the bottom of page five, just, those of you that have been on the board for a while, I talk about two sets of financial statements that are in your audit report each year. One is what we've been talking about, about the general fund, but the other is, you're also required to have a, what I call a consolidated balance sheet, set of financial statements, where we include not all the, not only just the short-term issues that we've been talking about, but your buildings and your long-term debt and things of that nature. And when you do that for Franklin Regional, and once again, it's, it's an accounting requirement more than anything else, when you do that, you see the net position of the school district is in a deficit position of $29 million, and it's more from an accounting perspective, as I mentioned, than anything else. Mark, you just told us we had $10 million in fund balance, and now you're telling us when we look at it on a consolidated basis, we're $29 million in the red. But again, those of you that have been on the board may recall that a liability that has to be recorded on your books for accounting purposes when you do this consolidated approach is your proportionate share of your liability, pension liability to state, Peasars, and at 63022, I have it listed on the next page, that net pension liability is about $82 million. And you also have contractual obligations for post-employment benefits that are put on your books, too, and that's another almost $13 million. So when you add those liabilities, once again, simply for accounting purposes, onto your corporate balance sheet, you can see why you went from a, from a black position, general fund, to this negative position. I just wanted to call that to the attention of the board. And then the last comment, although there's other information in the synopsis, your food service operations, although a much smaller fund than your general fund, nevertheless important, I just point out to the board, at the bottom of that table on page five, you see the second line down under food service operations, it says change in net position, fancy way of saying profit or loss for the year, and you can see this year, $9,000 as compared to a slight loss last year of $75,000. And the reason for that is, in the next three lines, most notably, the last line in this table, federal and state subsidies, and this has been the case with all of my school districts in the 21-22 fiscal year, the amount of national school lunch subsidies that they received this year versus last, and you can see that yours increased almost $870,000, and that is why there was such a turnaround in food service operations. So as, hopefully as quickly as I could, that's the highlights of the. So as, hopefully as quickly as I could, that's the highlights of the audit report for the 2122 fiscal year, and also the results of our opinions, both from a financial perspective and a compliance perspective. If anyone has any additional questions at this point, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Mr. Perry. Westmoreland Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget.
Yes, annually, all the member districts are asked to vote on the general operating budget of the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit. They have to have the majority of the member district school boards approve the budget by May 1st. The WIU board approved this budget on March 28th. For the most part, the district's contributions are remaining the same. Franklin Regional's required contribution to the general budget is increasing $193 for the next year.
Any questions? We have to roll call vote on that, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. I think we do.
You do.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions on Westmoreland Intermediate? Okay, district supply bids.
Yes, this is the annual award of bids for the consumable supplies that are used throughout the school year, for the 2324 school year, 187,389.61 across the various categories. Once again, we ran a sealed bid process for all these various categories. That total cost is about 7.9% higher this year as compared to last year. Some of that could be due to quantities, but obviously inflation's been a significant factor in these types of lower-cost but consumable types of items. I was, I guess, pleased to see we had increased bidder participation this year as compared to last year, so I think that's a result of some of the supply chain issues and their belief that they'll actually be able to supply items to us, you know, over the summer, six months out, moving in the right direction, so.
Any questions? District supply for Mr. Perry. All right. Grants, gifts, and donations.
This month, we have $107 to the Fund-A-Meal Program from FR staff, $4,500 from the Allegheny Intermediate Unit for Transform Ed Grants. Three of our science teachers across the district applied for 1,500 grant, $1,500 grants and were awarded the grants for materials for their classrooms, and then $200 for Remake Learning Days from the grantmakers of Westmoreland, Pennsylvania.
Questions on gifts, grants, and donations? Budget transfers.
This month, we have general fund transfers totaling $27,198.47.
Question on budget transfers? Preapproval of the April bills.
Similar to what we do in December and July, we're asking for a preapproval for April bills. Because of the quick turnaround this month in the meetings and the early date, we just wanted to maintain the, the check run basically being that third Monday of the month of April. So we will again send the list of bills to the board on April 13th and ask that you have any questions or comments to my office by the 17th, and then the checks would be mailed on the 18th.
Any questions on a preapproval of bills for April? Newlinsburg Chiller Report.
Thank you.
Mr. Matzie.
Good evening, everyone. I have three items this evening. All three items are part of 2324 capital. Reason for the early asking for approval is for scheduling and for time to get the equipment in. With the way the world's been, it, it's taking longer to get things in. These were all three part of the initial capital plan that I presented a few months ago. So the first item is Newlinsburg Chiller, to replace that this year.
Questions on Newlinsburg Chiller? Next.
Next item is stadium lighting. Permission to move forward on stadium lighting, so we can move forward to get them in for this fall season.
Questions on stadium lighting? Sanding, refinish the high school.
And the high school and the middle school sanding and refinishing of both of those gyms.
Questions on the, finishing the high school and the middle school gym floors?
Just to point out that it's the auxiliary gym in the high school, so people aren't confused for us working.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you, Mr. Matzie.
Thank you.
Dr. Delp, you're back up.
The next item I bring to you is the super eval system. This is an online evaluation system for superintendent, assistant superintendents, and other central office and building-level leaders that would allow for the provision of ongoing feedback and evidence-based evaluation of district leadership. Again, the two keys that, that they provide is, are the feedback and the evidence-based evaluation that are not presently available using the PAETEP system that we use to evaluate our teachers.
Question on supervaluations. Personnel, Dr. Delp.
Direct your attention to the resignations and retirements of support personnel and the appointments and transfers of supplemental personnel and resignations and retirements of that group as well.
Questions on personnel for Dr. Delp? Thank you, Dr. Delp. Any other questions on consent agenda, or consent agenda audits for the committee of the whole meeting? Hearing none, and motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Vince moves.
Second.
Second, Kevin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Did you hear that, Bill?
Bill?
You still there, Bill?
Bill, did you hear that?
I'm sorry, I had, I was on mute here, so nothing would bother you. I, yes, I heard that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move into the Monday, April 3, 2023 Franklin School Ward Directors' regular voting meeting. Stanford salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, reading the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. Ms. Wolf, roll call. You're going to be up, Bill.
Mr. Azalena?
Here.
Mr. Fizowski?
Here.
Mr. Wyner?
Here.
Mr. Frimsky?
Here.
Ms. Altteri Hand?
Here.
Dr. Echman Raimi?
Here.
Mr. Yant?
Yes.
Mr. Yinglin?
Here.
Mr. Benner Reader, you have to move.
Thank you. Okay, I need approval of the minutes for the committee of the whole meeting of March 20th, 2023, with committee of the whole meeting and a regular voting meeting for the minutes for March 20th, 2023. Need a motion.
So moved.
Move Scott. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion, motion carries eight zero, or, yes. Okay, future dates and upcoming topics.
Yes, future dates. On April 19th, 2023, there will be a finance committee meeting at 5:00 PM in the administrative offices in the former Newlinsburg Elementary School. On April 26th, there will be a policy committee meeting at 5:00 PM, also in the administrative offices. And then on May 8th, 2023, will be the committee of the whole meeting and regular board meeting at 7:30 PM here at the Murraysville Municipal Building. And the following items will be on the May agenda for board review and approval, election of a treasurer, proposed 2023, '24 school board meeting dates, first read policy approval, annual ESY contracts, gifts, grants, and donations, budget transfers, and a proposed final general fund budget for '23, '24, as well as personnel items. And that concludes future dates, upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Pirano. Okay, we had, again, no one for public comments tonight for the voting meeting. Solicitor's comments.
Comment for public session, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda items to be separate, for separate board action. I'm going to remove, I think it's consent agenda item number 12 for a roll call vote. Anybody else have any questions on consent agenda items? I need a motion for consent agenda items 1 through 11 and 13 through 21.
So moved.
Move Vince.
Second.
Second.
Second, Bill?
Second by Bill Yant.
Diane, okay, good, thank you. Move second, and any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. I'm sorry. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Okay, we're going to do, need a roll call vote for the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget. Roll call vote, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Altteri Hand?
Yes.
Dr. Fizowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
Mr. Frimsky?
Yes.
Dr. Echman Raimi?
Yes.
Mr. Yant?
Yes.
Mr. Yinglin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any other comments for the good of the order tonight? Need a motion to adjourn?
Bill Yant.
Second.
Second, Mark. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's over. Thank you, everybody. Have a great Easter. Enjoy your